Everyone, we will start approximately at 5:30 PM. The time is now 5:29. Rest and please silence your devices or turn them off so that we won't have any interruptions because you've done the business of the city. This special call meeting of self-sufficient council is hereby called to work. At this time, we're going to ask Councilman Harville to please offer our word of invitation.
For the opportunity to serve a city right here in all this summer experience and a little weather challenge here where you just working in a bit of situation as I mean you came here to work. Thank you for your love and your mercy. Thank you completely. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, God. Let's all say it for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may you see. At this time, we're going to ask our clerk to please inform our roll call special call meeting.
Good evening. President Young.
President.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Right.
Councilman Carmichael.
Right.
Councilwoman Jay. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. President. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you so much. My word, my name, and council, we were responsible. First order of business on this special call meeting is the contract with Dallas County Sports Flex. I'm going to ask later our attorney, please allow us to update for that. Y'all remember, we voted previously on a contract. There could be some complications. And so I'll ask the attorney next to you, please briefly go over that so that he may proceed.
Good evening. Thank you, President Young. Can you hear me out there?
Yes, sir. Does anybody want a copy of the agreement? Excuse me?
You could go back there as well.
Yeah, it's listed in a different sequence in my report. There's items 14 and 18 in my report. I did not pull them out per the special call meeting. I did not have the agenda when I drafted my report at first. But I do have both the items. I don't know, 14 of your report in my report is the joint venture agreement between Dallas County, Alabama, and the city of Selma. And I don't know, 18 is the second item on this special call meeting. The rest of it. The joint venture agreement between Dallas County, Alabama, and the city of Selma evolved as a softball baseball collaboration. The, there were at least two meetings in either, which were, I happened not to be at either meeting. It wasn't by the sign. It just happened that way. So the feedback I got was from Dr. Henderson and I spoke with the mayor on an agreement with the mayor. The information I got suggested that an agreement had been reached in principle and needed to be reviewed to write. And what actually happened is two agreements got reviewed to write. One by county attorney, John Kelly, from Dr. Henderson. The second agreement was the one I had in conjunction with what I was related in terms of what took place after two previous meetings between the county and the city. Attorney Kelly, when we were supposed to have this conference, said that he had not seen my agreement. I said, well, you didn't get it. That's my fault. I fool yourself about fully for that. But what that occasion was a review, a second, actually was a third review of the agreement between the county and the city. He reviewed, he was at the meeting. He drafted an agreement. I was not at the meeting. I drafted an agreement. We actually went back and he did a third review of the information. We had submitted. I gave him the breakdown of everything the city expected to have been in that agreement and what we presented to begin with in the agreement. The sticking points appeared to be two. The first sticking point was a matter of, the main sticking point was a matter of an individual whom we believe to be an employee of the county, who in reality was a contracted individual with the county. Payment to that individual was being sought directly from the city as opposed to paying the county and having the county's first consequence. It worked out that way because of the contract they had with him. The information I was given led no one in the city to understand that's what was being asked for to begin with for that specific individual. Once that was ascertained, we said, well, let's come to an agreement on what else needs to be done. It was again, two items specific. That individual being paid two separate favors, a total of $11,000, $8,000 in one instance, $3,000 in a second instance by the city. And I think a change of something like $260, Dr. Henderson can correct that if I'm wrong. A change of about $260 or more that the city was paying. Now, those were the only distinctions that have ever been made to anybody in the city from the first agreement or the one that we drafted as a second agreement. That's why this meeting was called for, the agreement that we're putting in front of you, besides those two changes. And the other 98.5 or 97.5 or whatever percentage of changes, there were no changes. Those were the only two of any significance. That's what we're reporting to the council. That's why we're asking to have you reconsider that affirmative or anti-agreement in front of you. It takes into account those two items that were changed to our agreement.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I'm really looking forward to one opportunity to ask questions. I want you to limit time, four minutes per time you speak. No more than two times, so we can move on to the next item. We're not going to spend all night. So, counsel, I will, in love, ask you to refrain from spending a whole lot of time on this. So at this time, are there any questions? Remember, you have two different times you can speak and four minutes per time. Counsel, my question.
Just a quick question. I'm going to ask this before, but this is in the budget. All of this is going to be drawn by the court.
Okay, counsel Jimms.
I'm trying to, is this a yearly contract or a year?
This contract is, I believe, only for this fiscal year.
Any other counsel? Could you repeat each answer?
The fiscal year, this is just yours.
Any other question? Counselwoman Thomas.
My question is, the Richard, the guy, Richard David, is the one that you added in the contract that the city will be paying. But how are you contracting him? Are we going to be paying him to keep the bill up?
That's possibly correct. Here's what happened. Davis was already under contract to the county. We did not know that. Nobody said we want a separate favor to him. They said we want X number of dollars. We agreed to the money. The money was not issued. Nothing of any would be changed here.
Any other questions? Here are enough of questions. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion. Here's our motion to approve the joint venture agreement between Dallas County, Alabama, and the city of Selma. I'm sorry, the modified joint venture agreement between Dallas County, Alabama.
This is present before you ask for roll call. Dr. Henderson, our intended county commission meeting, wanted to find out, ascertain whether or not there was any other outstanding issue. Nobody brought up any other outstanding issue.
Thank you. All right, that's it. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, who was representing?
Is there a second? Please allow me to reflect. It's moved by Councilman Jefferson to properly second it. Our counsel, the car Michael, to approve the modified joint venture agreement between Dallas County, Alabama, and the city of Selma. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Dennison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, counsel. Can you read, now of course, can you read back the results of said vote? All right, thank you so much. At this time, now, counsel, the next item on our special call agenda is the fire chief appointment. And as stated before, we're going to ask that if you do have comment or speech, that you refrain from going over four minutes, two times per speaking. At this time, is there anyone who'd like to speak concerning the fire chief appointment? Or are there any motions offered?
I'd like to make a motion to your point. Before the motion is made, then I quote.
Yes, sir.
I would like to request that counsel, as you enter an executive session, discuss this matter before the move.
Is there a motion by any House member to go into executive sessions under what ground, ma'am?
Name and care.
Is there a motion to approve Mayor Perkins' request to go into executive session pursuant to Alabama law? Is there a motion? All right, give me, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. We need to state the actual legal provision under the exceptions. Give me a second. I can, okay.
Sorry, six, four, five, eight, seven.
All right, counsel. At this time, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Dennison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Yes, Councilwoman Johnson.
Counsel, we have 10 minutes. We'll be back. Thank you.
If anybody touched that, break that thing.
Really?
Yeah. But don't tell anybody I said it.
Are you going to tell me under the bus?
Certainly.
Oh. All right, counsel. If there are no shifts, go back to regular session for the special call meeting. All right, I think this was counsel Christie Thomas. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, it's moved by counsel Chris Thomas, properly seconded. Our counsel, the car Michael, go back to regular session of this special call meeting. I'll read from question. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Dennison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, counsel, we're back to the regular session. At this time, is there a motion? Any other discussion for members of the council? Is there, can you please state your full motion if you have a motion?
We'll go. This point. Mason. I believe he is at the resume and he was the top pick of the safety party.
All right, is there a second? All right, please allow me to reflect. It's moved by counsel Carmichael and properly seconded by councilwoman Jamie Thomas to appoint Mr. Willie Mason as Selma's fire chief. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Please come back to me.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Dennison.
I'll show you.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson. President Young.
I'm reviewing the resumes and knowing that it's time to move forward. We've been holding this point out a long time. It is time for us to select the fire chief. My vote is yes. Please read back the results of the vote, Madam Clerk.
Five of the parties have one.
Thank you. With that saying, ladies and gentlemen, yes, counsel Harville.
There's a resolution. Attorney, do we go ahead and back it up?
Yes, you can go ahead and approve it and replace the name in there. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 166, that's 21 slash 22, resolution to appoint fire chief of the city of Selma, Alabama with the name of Willie Mason? All right, is there a second? Please allow me to reflect. It was moved by counsel woman Chris Thomas and properly seconded by counsel Harville. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Dennison.
I'll show you.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Right, Madam Clerk, please read back the results of said vote.
Five of the parties have one.
Thank you, counsel. Resolution R 166 dash 21, 22, the resolution to appoint fire chief of the city of Alabama, city of Selma, Alabama, Willie Mason has been approved. At this time, let us congratulate Selma's newly appointed fire chief, Willie Mason. At this time, let us congratulate Selma's newly appointed Fire Chief Willie Mason. We commend you for going through the process. And I leave everyone here, wishes you nothing but the best. So we know that our fire department is great indeed. And we hope that you will lead individuals that are assigned to the fire department all to success. Because if they're successful, Selma, Alabama will be successful. And for the record, you did receive the appointment per council vote. And also per rules and regulations of the City of Selma. Mayor Perkins is your direct and immediate supervisor for day-to-day operations. That is his responsibility. And as far as reporting purposes, you have the responsibility to come before the council by time, to give us updates regarding the fire department. But we wish you the very best. We congratulate you on this effort and Godspeed. Again, let's congratulate our new appointee, Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Council.
President Young.
Yes.
The resolution does not cite the salary. I wasn't sure before going to the Treasury to confirm the salary. What to put in here, I'll confirm that with the Treasury first thing in the morning.
Whatever is currently budgeted for the Fire Chief, that is the amount to place into the record, into the actual resolution, the current budget amount.
Got it. Thank you.
Alright. With that said, is there any other further business discussed regarding the special call meeting? Council, thank you for your participation at this time. The special call meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
No, I didn't.
Alright, Mr. Johnson.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, you too. And this work session of the Selma State Council is hereby paused. Will follow the agenda as presented. At this time, we're going to ask Chief Fulfer to please offer our invitation for our work session. He does my, he can chief over.
That's right, I was following the job now. But today, this is the day that you make your own choice and want to play it. Thank you for those that are here, we thank you for the mayor of the city council. We ask that you will look on them, we ask they make decisions in the best interest of our city. As they need us to gather to use this land.
Amen. Thank you. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution where it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, everyone, you may be seated at this time. We'll have a roll call of those members of council that are present. Council President Billy Young, present. Councilman Harville. Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilman Clay Carmichael. Councilwoman Lisa James. Councilman Samuel Randolph. Councilman Anthony Jensen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas.
President.
And Councilman Michael Johnson. Please allow the record to reflect that we have a total of six councilmembers present for this evening's work session. We do not have any citizens' requests at this time from council. So we'll move on to any announcements. Are there any announcements that need to be shared at this time? Here are your announcements. Let us now move on to Mayor's report and then the Attorney's report. Mayor Perkins, good evening.
Good evening, Council. Good evening. And so, good evening to all. The items that presented this evening for discussion and hopefully favorable consideration on Tuesday. Item one, network IP configuration project. The John Kinnison is available to answer any questions. Kennedy, come forward at this time.
Good evening, Council. It is John Kinnison, City Director. I'm presenting the contract to the city for, for services for the acting department. We're looking to try to straighten out and configure, reconfigure our system, network system. So we're trying to do a network architecture design where we'll separate IP addresses from telephones to computers and all network devices. So we'll better analyze and know system failures at different points. And we won't have a, a large scope of IP addresses. And I really don't want to go too, too technical unless you, unless you need more information. But it's, it's more to help resolve issues quickly and efficiently and effectively knowing which IP address belongs to which device.
I just think, I would just say, I think it is very important for me to do this. So, okay.
Okay, and Council Carmichael?
This is going to tell communications.
Correct. It keeps, it's going to stabilize and secure our network. It'll give us a better understanding of where we have certain faults in our network on specific devices. Speaking about how can I explain it to, to, to council tonight? And the only thing that kind of came to my mind was Mr. Harville saying about the 5G and like having a flashlight. What we're trying to do is minimize the scope where we can dictate where we have faults on certain devices on our system. Right now, it's kind of scattered and a little bit more complex. So we're trying to break it down and make everything have like parent-child hierarchy. So we understand if it fails, this is a computer device. This is a telephone, if not device. This is an access point. This is a camera that has failed. So we'll be able to better analyze it and resolve those issues fairly quickly.
Any other questions at this time? Alright, here are no further questions. Thank you. We have a vote of $5,400 out in the back. Is that the correct amount?
Correct. I apologize. The total amount is $5,400. I have it coming out of my line. I need to find six one one five, account number five one zero zero five. It's already, you should have covered them out. I have the funds to take over this. And also, it's come out of my professional service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Alright.
Thank you. I have item number two. Fire truck repair. I have consulted with, spoken with newly deployed Chief Mason. Assistant Chief Franklin will present this because of his knowledge of the issue.
I'm getting, getting the mayor's seat as well. Don't worry. Did you discuss? Engine on three station, house that, five station on three on Broad Street. At this time, it's in shock. The governor, the governor, the deputy bureau chief is quitting. Probably need a motor. So we need to get some more real power. It's a 2010 Pierce engine. This is drastically driven oil. Cilic going in. And the cost is going to be around $4,1,587. Dollars and sixty-five cents. That is just for the engine repair, but they're saying that's not everything. That's not inclusive of everything. That's just a good number they can give me to come before you, the council, to request that we at least go at least to that amount. Now, I have the letter, I got a letter here, state, not reading to you in the pool. This request is seeking an authorization to make repairs to reveal flat reflect the engine on the 2010 Pierce fire truck that's housed at Station Three on Broad Street. The cost of the repairs just for the engine estimated around $4,1,587. The truck is also having other repairs being performed at this time. And that will be an additional cost. I request that we operate to see what repairs needed by using the funds in the vehicle repair maintenance line, 1.65, 6500.51037. That has a balance of $49,927.21 as February 16. Great. I don't know anything about big trucks, certain factors. I'm just curious, what would be the ballpark on instead of overhaul and when you put the new engine in? That cost was around 61,000. Is the truck in good enough shape that that could be something we even consider? Fire trucks, you, the lot of fire trucks used in 2010. This is 2010, so we're already 12 years, 12 years in, we're handling it in the world. Yes. So do, we wanted to spend additional $20,000 and be looking at replacement, you know, in a matter of eight years.
Alright. Any other questions, Council? Regarding presentation? You know, with, passing, back on the top.
You may have said, you said, there are other things that needs to be, that need to be prepared on the spot tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any idea, did they give you any, a list of any other things besides the order with that? Because you don't have to come back again, don't you?
Well, I'm hoping not to come back for this particular engine. Hopefully the rest of the repairs will be under $5,000. But we at least for this amount to be approved. The other repairs is repacking the tank because it's dripping. And you have to do that every so often. But it's not overboard right now. I had, so we have. That's what initially went up there for, and I told him to look at the oil being, because it's so drastic. And, you know, some years ago, the truck did run hot, it wore itself off. And that's where we dropped our problem.
We're eighty-four years after the?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we put a new engine?
Well, rebuild later. Yes, ma'am.
What, what's? Just curious, and just thinking of what we're looking at. If we put a new engine in, what kind of warranty would give a new engine compared to this one-year parts and labor?
The, the new engine is called reconditioning, a reconditioning, not a brand-new engine.
Okay.
The reconditioning engine will give us two years, 100,000 miles. Where this engine that we're requesting a long block replacement or rebuild will give us one year, 50,000 miles.
That's 20,000 miles more for another year, another 50,000 miles.
True. I would talk with the shop extensively. They feel like a replacement or a rebuild would be the best way to go at this point in time. Now, they will be, they will be using some of the equipment off of the old engine. You know, to, because it's a rooming process. But the new engine, we only want to get a few more things that's newer than I guess. I don't know if we want to go to $20,000 extra plus whatever else we were going to the truck to at this time. I'm scared to ask. How much is a new truck? About 500,000?
Alright, any other questions, Council? Alright, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And keep our prayers with you at this time. Our prayers with you. Alright, this.
The third item is equipment and firearms, Chief Fulfer. So they'll present that issue. Also, he will, while he's here, he go ahead and present the building repairs and maintenance as well. Good evening again.
Good evening, good evening.
On the equipment firearms, what this is, is our request to go ahead and order ammo. Initially, we asked for $6,000, but by the time they got us four, they don't have $2,000. And they told us if waiting any longer, it'd be $10,000. So last year, we ordered ammo back in March, we didn't get it to December. So we're asking for council to show favor to us to get these ammo ordered.
Let's get them all ordered, Council. Alright. Alright, I'll be hearing your questions.
Okay. On the second, I, like I spoke to you all last year about the building and its condition. And that goes along with the heating and air system in there. The heat has gone out in it. I tried to get folks from local heating and air fronts, but there's only one that could work on our wall. And they gave us a quote of $5,100 and $5,100, three dollars. And they gave us a quote of $5,100 and $5,103. And the labor just ballparked it for $1,000 to replace the part so that he was going to fix it completely.
No.
Your question? I'm, I'm actually looking at other buildings, descriptions, things that we have that we're going to get approved and go ahead and get fixed and do some point of writing. Just seeing that that building on this. And. So, and so.
Right. We have our own letter. So was it already motioned?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Councilor Carmichael.
I know we don't have that number over for white. It's a plus, plus about estimated that.
It's about $1,000.
All right. Very good. Very quick. Any other questions? All right. Let's give them some heat too. All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilor Carmichael will help you with that. You know, we'll receive, Mr. Mayor.
Open North Island for $110,000. If you wouldn't waste the council's time, we have to change it. But I would be happy to keep moving. Item five, vehicle purchase, these injuries, that injuries, as you come forward, talk about the self-possess property request to purchase.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
But hopefully you'd be curious about, all right. So we are seeking to purchase a truck. This will be the second truck that I've joined the department. You know, when I joined, there were one person, we had one employee, I made two. Now we're at ten. So what that means is that we have one working truck that can actually haul the trailer, the zero turns, all the equipment that we need. And certainly we cannot fit ten people in one truck. The other piece is we need to be able to handle more things at the same time. So that way we, we have enough people now that we can send two crews out in two different directions and be much more efficient and effective all the time. Because now what's also happening is you take some people, take a couple of zero turns and they got to come back and pick up some more people. And so we're losing time and those that just bring us right around the corner. And we'll definitely need to be able to be more efficient and effective. Without any more. Now we have multiple.
Would you, we have a place for that, ma'am?
Yes.
Man, that's good.
Yeah, that's great.
All right. So any questions? I believe she has stated the need and purpose of the truck. We all understand more people, more transportation, give them more work done. All right. Thank you.
Item six, second base. On the, on the agenda. I have six authorization to apply for the United States Department of Agriculture, real business development grant. Daniel Booton, he's developed a resolution 165 dash 2122. Daniel.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Good evening, Council. What you have before you is resolution 165 2122, which is the authorization to apply to the USDA rural business development grant. The city does seek to apply to this opportunity to address business development opportunities within downtown Selma. Specifically, the project with cost, are we going to apply for an amount not to exceed $150,000 in federal funds? And it will have no cost. There will be no cost to the city, so there is no match requirement. So we, what we are looking to do is to secure and re-thrize the second and third floors of the Selma Welcome Center so that that, those floors would be able to be utilized, stabilize the structure and restore the structure so that we can create an all-access tourism hub. I think I've probably shared that vision with you guys previously. We have reached out to three local contractors. The, the damage to the building is pretty extensive and so they don't have quotes so far. They're working on those quotes. We've reached out to Cleveland Construction, Frazier Owlsley, as well as Stewart Construction. And so they are working to get us quotes and those numbers will be used to put in the grant application. But the overall goal is to be able to expand that facility so that we can assist our tourism outfitters, vendors, guides and organizations with the space to either provide services or tourism products or just a place for seminars and educational lectures centered around telling Selma's story. And so in a nutshell, that's what the, the project or the program would be. And this project would just help to be able to fund improvements to the facility as well as any quick, any equipment that may be needed for that purpose.
Thank you. Any questions, Council?
Mayor Perkins, can you explain what facility is this?
This is Welcome Center.
Welcome Center, okay.
The nation said that whether it comes with a match.
No, no, this is a clause, not a sentence.
Okay. All right, Council. This is pretty straightforward. Go ahead, Council, one more time.
Sorry, just want to get, oh. This is a grant that you're getting to do this with, to revolve this Welcome Center.
Yes, ma'am. This is an additional grant that we're, it's, it's, it is a competitive grant, grant. So we have to apply and if awarded, this is the purpose that we would like to use the funding for.
Thank you, Council. All right.
Mayor, thank you. Items seven and eight, self-explanatory, Council, not going to believe with that. I feel the shift in the atmosphere. I think it's kind of, it's not a time, isn't that right, Council? Oh, yeah. It's not a time, it's just, just a matter of time. Also, I want to, on the camera system, I want to mention that the young.
I was going to say, I, I just remembered today that on email thread, I will send an email letting you know that we did make that approval at the meeting until today. And I'll get that done sometime before the evening, letting you know that we did approve the waiver of the comments.
That, that's fine. I, I, I would like, Council, I just wanted to mention the public safety meeting we had yesterday. Chief Pope, we had, we had law enforcement agents there, FBI, EBI, ETF, task force, federal, state, county, local, about thirty law enforcement professionals in the room. And we were dealing with and addressing issues of crime in Selma specifically. That's what we were talking about. And it was a very, very good meeting, very informative meeting. We got a couple of really good ideas that we want to be moving forward. I'm hoping we're going to talk to you and I can talk about some more things. For Councilman Young, I hope you heard the, the, the city, I won't mention by name, but the chief who was there who had already leased their camera system Malgon Power and how well it was working and how many, how many other cities it was in the network. And it was a lease arrangement and they didn't have to buy any equipment. So I just, and I couldn't have planned that any better myself. And I, and I didn't, I didn't have anything to communicate at this end of day. But it was just good to hear other law enforcement professionals speak to this issue. And this was one of the things they were recommending that we need to really seriously consider.
And I just want to add, the entire, I guess, what we call a conference was really, really good because to have FBI, US Attorney's Office, ATF, Attorney General's Office, the US Attorney Office, ALEA, and our very own State Troopers, to have all those individuals in Selma, to have that power, manpower here. And we actually got down to some different grid on some issues that we could approve. One is this lip service. We actually identified some issues that we can actually repair and fix. And I want to thank Mayor Perkins and also Terry Sanders from the lead for organizing this. Ladies and gentlemen, there are people outside of Selma that care about Selma and want Selma to succeed. And yesterday we saw proof of that, that all these people from everywhere came with the specific goal of helping Selma out of that. And so it was a very powerful conference. And it was, it was timely. And I think out of that, Mayor Perkins, I do see some really good things coming for our police department.
Yes. AMIC, our municipal insurance company, President, they were key in organizing and planning this. And it written about risk management, reducing the risk associated with criminal activity and structure and how we police in our community. And even though the US Attorney has appointed, Chairman Arlington, I think was the name. He has a, has a, this, has a assistant US Attorney appointed to. So the US Attorney, that still was here yesterday. He came himself to be a part of this meeting. The AG's office also head representative there with investigator Tom Reese. It was really a solid, a solid meeting. And I, you know, Council, we could, I think we could save a lot of money if we go ahead and make a decision to go ahead and get this and save a lot of time. And because I really think we need to do something. I want to go ahead and get that done. Maybe you're, which, and that, I mean, I got to spend all this money, legal fees and all this stuff. Because quite frankly, the attorneys that we got are the ones that already work with a couple.
And, 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 man, I wish you would have been with us today and the lead. That was a topic of conversation. And there's some other issues that were raised that I think need to be brought to everybody's attention too. So I hear what you're saying, we're moving forward in the right direction. All right. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Attorney support, Attorney Matt.
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council, ladies and gentlemen in the council chamber. My reports and comments that we had from the last quarter that I hear, several of the items are repeat items. The first two items involved American Rescue Plan Act. Mr. Williams Scott was the author, creator of the information that went into those two resolutions. You all asked, if I would ask him to be here. I think due to the inclement weather, he's not here in person. But if I'm not mistaken, he was sent the information. And I see his name on the, the screen over there. So he is, and I have prepped him totally prepared to ask any questions relative to those two resolutions or anything else about TRISTATs or American Rescue Plan funds. There was some discussion last time about American Rescue Plan 146 dash 21 slash 22, the American Plan Act. I think the basic question being raised was what's the policy or procedure and why is it what it is? And I wanted Mr. Scott to address that. He and I talked earlier today, but I think you can go back to him and I can, if you don't mind.
You don't, you don't mind him?
Mr. Scott, are you able to, I'm you?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, it was always a pleasure to be talking to the council and to the mayor and to the audience, everybody that's here. Wanted to address this resolution that's R 146 dash 21 slash 22. This was developed because of a meeting that we had, finance meeting with Council Lady Thomas and with Councilman Harvey as far as, as relates to having a policy in place as relates to how things are handled. So we actually put this together based on that conversation at that meeting. And this actually outlines that the policy is, is that we have a review policy. If you can, it's a little line in there that I've already talked to Attorney Matt about that says, C attachment that we're going to take out because this resolution is actually a policy. And it just states that everything that's going to be done with the American Rescue Plan funds will be approved by the city council and mayor. And that puts things in place so that we have a good system in place. Also, it states that we will review based on the guidelines, anything that need to be approved, disapproved. And we will submit documentation to that effect. And then also it just kind of outlines just what are we using as the deciding factor? And that's going to be guidelines from the Department of Treasury, which now relates to the final rule and compliance documentation that they provided. So that's the reason why this, it was developed just to kind of clear, clear cut outline of that there is a review process. And then in essence, it has to go through that process, anything that you plan on spending funds for. So it's a checks and balances.
And I think with this one, what are the notable changes I see? The example of whatever that exhibit was, that we talked about the last one, that Councilor Carmichael had a question about, that's been removed, that might have, that's been removed from this new resolution. I do notice that pretty much everything else is the same as I can see. But, wait, Councilor Carmichael, can you have some time?
Yes. This is referring to, just to be sure, this is referring to the ARP COVID-19 expenditure, January 24, 2022, that, that outline, we, the, written on the letter that says the American Rescue Plan 2021 ARP appropriated for your organization during COVID-19 pandemic. I'm sending this one down on section, ARP outline, but here's the second motion to approve, propose to use. Is, is that what we were referring to in this as our policy? I just want to be clear, because that's all I have.
Nope. No. Oh, no, it's not. No, it's not. That letter will be a part of every motion that you will do. You would get a letter like that that relates to every motion, every expenditures. That'll be formatted that way where it has the motion, what the plan uses and what authorizes you to do it. But that's not the review policy. Review policy in essence is in that first one, two, three, four. In the, in the field paragraph was just states that TRISTATs has developed a review policy. And that is just pretty much just a simple line where post ARP expenditures have to be approved by the Selma City Council and James Perkins Jr., Mayor of the City of Selma. That is the policy.
Any other questions, put it, Councilor Tom?
Mr. Williams, I thought that we had agreed that they, that the finance chairperson asked that we, that you will give the attorney can come back with. So you want to use this, the information that you got that we would put, as we know, put in place in one just way that we want to use the bus? Are we going to use that right here?
Yes, 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 ma'am. We, we put that, put this in just a form of resolution. Instead of actually just, you know, writing in an additional policy because it still would have been that y'all would have had to approve it. So we just included it within the resolution that once you approve this, it authorized that every expenditure has to go through the review process. But if there's necessary that you want to have additional details and attachment to this, we'd be more than glad to do that. Whatever is necessary for the council.
Well, I'm very concerned about it because the things were brought to our attention today about American Rescue. When we spend funds, that they say that if we spend money, we need to do a resolution on how we spend them. See? And I want, we want to keep clear on this to make sure that we are doing it according to way that this, this body of council, they gave us that recommendation today at the meeting, that any money that we spend, that we need to have some documentation, you know, a resolution.
Well, I, I will say this, is that if, if that's the guidelines the city wants to go by to have a resolution for each transaction that y'all, you just say for each motion that you make, we'll be more than glad to do a resolution because if you'll notice, this resolution just relates to the policy that everything has to be reviewed. You'll see another resolution, which is the next one. You'll see another resolution, which is the next one, uh, attorney Madison will bring up, which has the resolution for the payroll reimbursement. And anything else you do, we'll be more than glad to draft a resolution along with a letter like we're doing. Uh, just, just to do as much extras y'all may want us to do, we'd be more than glad to.
Thank you, council, council, my, my, I would give you.
Okay, and, and, and just, just to be clear, I think, um, our, our whole, our policy. Do you have a message that, that we, that we go by each time of the day? And if that, and if that policy includes a resolution, then we pass a resolution for each expenditure, that needs to be written out. As, as our policy and, 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 and included in this resolution. Rather than referring to something that we really don't have.
Okay, so what I mean, yeah, so what I mean, council project, is we can pass this resolution. But you would like attached to that resolution, the policy in which it refers to. And in that policy, if you're talking about that first to have set by set process, which includes one of the steps need. That a resolution has to be attached with a description of the expenditure and why it's being spent, uh, included in that, uh, pass. So, I think, uh, attorney, if I'm hearing, if I'm hearing councilwoman Thomas and councilman Parker correctly. We're okay with the resolution, but we want a policy attached that details all the same. And then we approve both of those simultaneously, uh, so that way then, uh, the resolution refers to, uh, the actual policy, with the policy attached.
So, we can refer to that policy every time we move, move, we start hearing that.
This is what we're going to do, almost like a form that, so if you could include that, draft that, I think.
What, and, and I, I think I did word, oh, council members, and you want to put the government. Which, what I'm hearing is you want a policy that outlines the process, procedure.
Of the expenditure of American Rescue Plan.
Step by step procedures, uh, as part of the policy.
And I think I heard the words, I need more detail, and so, uh, we can get that up, if we can. Okay?
Okay, okay.
And I wanted to outline, I wanted to state again, that as the representative of Trisats, Mr. Scott. Prepared the resolution, he and I talked about it. I did not change it because I wanted him to explain why he wanted it the way he did, and we just did that.
And, 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 and the letter, it tells, uh, Mr. Scott, it's regular, I mean, the one of the one portion. The only problem is that we referred that letter, under the one of the one portions, it refers to a single expenditure. I, I don't want to refer this letter about single expenditure when, when we're, when we're kind of the resolution for all expenditure, they follow it, you know.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll be more than glad to do that, we'll develop that and get that ready, uh, do y'all need that before your council meeting on Tuesday?
I do, we, it, it's possible, and then we put them on the same time.
Uh, okay, uh, we'll be, we'll jump on that tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, we appreciate it.
So, thank you, sir, to prepare the table, hold those two, uh, the, uh, well, hopefully said, maybe by five, I mean, on. No, I mean, one, two, I'm not recording tonight.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you can move on to the next, uh, since they're late.
I have number three, because the Selma Water, the.
Uh, I, I got a question on attorney Madison. Uh, I was going to say that second resolution, which is that R one fifty-three dash twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, could we speak to that just shortly?
Fund, first the fund reimbursement, under, oh.
Yes.
Sure, that's up to council president, yes, please.
Okay, um, because that, that, that was the, I know that y'all had some things that you had that was expenditures that you want to, uh, be able to cover those costs. So, that resolution here, actually, we identified, like we spoke about in your other council meeting, one million six hundred, uh, twenty thousand, four hundred, thirty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. And reimbursable payroll salaries that could allow you then to, um, uh, move those funds from your American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, use those funds towards covering expenses that normally wouldn't be covered with American Rescue Plan directly. But once we cleared it with the payroll salaries, it allowed it to be unrestricted so that it could cover, um, the, the information that was on that list. And that, that total amount came to, and I, I, that total amount came to the fire department's salaries were five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred. And fifty-six thousand and sixty-five cents, and the police department reimbursed salary would be one million fifty-one thousand, nine hundred, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. And so, those, that was the total amount that how we added up. And the total that we had as far as expenditures that you currently have, that we're going to go, but go by. To make sure that everything is, is documented based on the expenditures that were submitted and your reimbursement amount, that total.
And this is what we've been talking about all along, so this is nothing new, this is what we are thankful for, very thankful for, okay? Thank you, Mr. Scott, alright, you can proceed, how much minutes?
I have number three, not as good as we, want to discuss, I have number four and sixteen, confirmation of the question. That the new buildings we don't, they require for ordinance, the transfer of property to real estate. Uh, that new building was done, which was, and, and asked the question, yes, and the statute confirming that requirement. Which is a relative statute, uh, also comes out, we love that point, so that's twenty-four thousand, ninety-seven, uh. Is the statute addresses the disposition of unneeded real estate or dispossessment ordinance. And that ordinance states that the property can be transferred by ordinance. You in effect declaring it unneeded, so that you can by law say, we can get along about this, we can get along, exactly, we can get along about this. And, and in this case, that refers to non-municipal property, the two fossil, the Selma Water, Zazzam, to have, and base to be on, for the, they can. Take care of maintenance, uh, and system problems with, I think it's a, a drainage sewer, uh, sewerhead, uh, of the water system. The specific identification and legal description of those property, which comes in two tracks, is a ten by, ten foot by, ten feet by thirty feet fossil. Uh, and twenty feet by thirty feet fossil, uh, near, at, or near police building on, front of the town. Those fossils are being sold for the purpose of sewer maintenance and destruction of Selma Water. The other key provisions in addition to the transfer of the D, points out that the property would bring to the city benefits, CCQ. Or primarily for the purposes of sewer drainage services, benefit, with benefit, to the general level. Uh, in addition to the authority conferred otherwise by putting along the merits of all the lines. Because the D required by this law to draft and execute the sign and deliver to the grantee of the business of this office. Business itself and any determination of them living within enforcement of the office for time, they, the living enforcement of the main of the office. Uh, you want to do that to the other service.
Okay, so, Amy. So, Mr. Attorney, if I heard you correctly, right, so, to transfer this property, you said we don't need an ordinance, or we do need an ordinance?
No, I said we do.
We said we do, alright, so resolution.
That's what this is.
Okay, so, the, the, the language, resolution needs to be changed.
I was telling you, you could ignore the resolution, I'm just showing you the, the history of this.
I got you, okay, so you'll come with the ordinance?
The ordinance is in here.
Is it there, okay, is that sixteen, right, okay, okay.
That's what I was just reading.
Now, okay, so the ordinance for this transfer is here, and the D is there.
You, you actually have, although you don't need it, the resolution, the D and the ordinance.
Okay.
Cannot report.
But I'll use the order.
I'll use the ordinance and.
And the.
Well, you don't need it, the mayor.
We don't need.
The mayor needs to be, the ordinance allows the mayor to execute.
I'll use the order, okay.
I am considering attaching a fair market price to the property transaction. I just want to let you know that, and I'll discuss that with him, if you see, if you see a number when you see it Tuesday, then that would be a negotiated fair market price.
It also included the other ordinance that we've been talking about, plus some more property difference.
Okay, okay, now.
So, now, this ordinance is going to have no perjury, that we probably, like, in the other one, right?
Yes, it's not effective until, it's not effective until.
Right, yeah, I'm just, I'm just letting you hear, yeah.
So, basically, when we come Tuesday, you'll be asking us to place that first, the ordinance?
Yes.
Is that, okay?
Yes, okay. And the same thing with the other one.
Okay.
Uh, which, by the way, was in resolution form, I have number five, uh, now ordinance, you know, item sixty, the ordinance. For the, the sale project to the child, where, um, I would answer any questions, but I would like counseling, uh, Johnson, that he has an encounter to. Uh, this, uh, this is a matter of, as long as you wanted it, or, that's the only thing I'm asking for. When I think you tried to do that, some of that last time, come down to, yeah, yeah.
The property, uh, it's on, you know, that, edit, edit, what it calls, uh, edit, you know, edit. And it pertains to, uh, five particles.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, I have number, number six, you know, the, in the red one.
Here, fifteen oh seven, the grand street two, that.
One, one is basically the brand.
Okay.
And the other one is basically yellow, that.
Okay, I want to say something. Five, okay, right, nineteen oh nine, nineteen oh seven, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh one, and nineteen oh six.
Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, the continues to that, what the idea was.
Yes. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding, uh, this proposed? Yeah. Venture, come from.
I'll, 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 I'll agree about this.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that, that we, we have the fair market value, we can't, I don't want to, and dislike the fair market value. Like, we have, have that value, you know, the owner.
And, and the fair market value was not as a change, and part of the discussions with the proposed buyer was who would pay for a title search. A property appraisal.
So, pr- properly, we, we get, we get a letter in the head in order to make it over with, purchase of property.
You can do that, do that, but I wanted to point out too, this is part of what the mayor was saying, that the ordinance states that the, uh. Properties to try, you know, together in easements, a purpose of, of collectively referred to and appearing as property. The city of Selma is to sell the property at a price to be based on parallel back rate, including all the legal taxes and leasings. The buyer should pay all costs associated with the sale of the stated property. And the city of Selma and buyer share the issue of agreement that the property will serve a public person that benefit, the general, neighborhood revitalization, and economic development goals. And we're not giving the property away, we're selling it, and we're not selling it for the purpose of turning it into, uh, a speakeasy or, or, or a saloon or so on. The, the purpose is for neighborhood revitalization and economic development, but the cost is what councilman, calling referring to, these are the right. To begin to continue the discussions along those lines, we wanted the council to weigh in on the others.
So, we're just waiting to get back, and we want that, I think you said that, that fair market value has to be listed in the four corners of the document.
That's right.
That that has to be, uh, placed in here, one, two, three, four, other.
And, and that's what, again, I think the very, the version is.
Right, okay, so we'll wait on that one, okay, okay. Yes.
For this, the thing of a property, we, we not have to have a public here.
So, that's, I was, I was under the understanding that we have, have the ordinance requiring this, uh, that public area, right, you know. The community agrees that it is not needed for a public park, and then the board will settle.
And, and, and.
It's clearly spelled out, I'm not looking at manual right now, but it's clearly spelled out.
And our trainings that, I remember distinctly saying that when there's a sale of property, there must be a public here. I remember that being distinctly discussed that, that you have to have, you have to, you have to provide the public notice for that public. And we were talking about the notice provision, that's where it came up, and they said that you have to provide the public notice, and then conduct the public here. And then upon that, then make an interpretation of declaring it, uh, for public purpose, and declaring it as surplus property.
And, and not ahead at all in one character, that's very, with the council, uh, on any drop.
But, but.
They phrase, I think that was that.
Blessing they phrase.
And also she pointed to us too, the time after, that we also can look under our selected reading with the proper, they got a little sample of the ordinance. That when we get ready to directly in the selected reading, y'all could want to get.
I just want to be sure, and, and this is, I, I think I'll move to this at least in part, that, that. We're not talking about section ninety-four point one of state constitution, which is a specific exception with economic development and industrial development.
The only, only thing that is, is that, that we give the property.
Right.
But we still have to have the process we were given.
I, I, I understand that now, and what I'm saying is.
I understand the constitution provisions you're talking about, they're two different one, nine four and sixteen.
They're saying give versus sell, what you're talking about.
Yeah, in, in, no matter if we're giving it or selling it, we still have to have the process of public area, or one of the, there's a help. If we're going to give it, and we have to, no matter public purpose, we're going to.
I understand, and all I was asking was, you were distinctly that from nine four point one, that's what I was getting.
Three six, two seven six.
Okay, item number seven is the resolution, uh, R one fifty-nine dash twenty-one slash twenty-two, salary increase across the, uh. Uh, this is the resolution that we draw, uh, based on the request of the police chief, and I think in consultation with personnel, uh. Chief, in consultation with the personnel, right, so, again, it's important to know what the background is of this. The resolution asks for a nine dollar an hour, per hour salary raising from seven twenty-five an hour for, um, crossing laws. Who are the only individuals I believe in the police department, who still have to about, about an hour. Is. I said the resolution asks for the raising of the salary of crossing laws in the police department. From seven dollars twenty-five cents an hour to nine dollars, as they were the only employees who were still in the police department at, you know, the way that seven dollars twenty-five cents.
Uh, council project?
I, uh, I'm not against, uh, plenty of places about that, uh, as well, but, uh, but I, I do want to see how effective about it. And, and, uh, think about that, and, and make sure, uh, where we are, I believe we're at for, uh, and, and scale, and see how that, that scale will better about it.
We have, we. We have that, I've got it on my, in my, just a couple of additional things that we need to get, so, I think we'll, we'll be, once we get this additional information. I think we'll, we'll be, once we get this additional information, we are able to address, address all the salaries now.
I'd be able to, so, that, you know, what's, we'll look back, but if we change our budget, you know, we're, we're.
That's, counsel, that's your, I don't have any comment, I, I don't know the answer to the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying this about, not, the.
Got it, got it. Uh, any other questions? No, for myself inside. Uh, item eight, resolution R one sixty that twenty-one slash twenty-two, uh, for the alignment of the tax year. The city is contemplating in this resolution, the collaboration with county Dallas County Tax, uh, Assessor and Tax Collector's Office, uh, the, the collection of city tax and ballot counting. The only way that's gonna work without a whole lot of, is to align the tax years. Our current, that, our current tax year, uh, I believe is one May, it's, it's not one October, it's September thirty, we couldn't, and it's bound to be, of course, it's different.
I think per the resolution, uh, the tax year currently beginning May first and ending on the thirtieth day of April.
Correct.
And we want to change it to what we're counting.
To one October, December third, right? Yeah, that, that's for alignment purposes so that they can do what they need to do.
And as you all remember, we did say we're going to two.
And they've already asked, they've already asked.
Okay.
It's not for two of us.
Right. This is a part of what we plan on doing. All right, thank you, Mr. Turner.
All right, uh, item number nine. Resolution for the payment of the fee, uh, the city council itself is desirous of securing the assistance of Dallas County again with the annual process of tax assessments, assessments and collection. And, uh, to obtain that service, they're gonna charge a fee. The resolution is presented here to ask for your approval to consider, to consider compensation of up to one percent of tax collection, up to one percent of the tax, uh, assessment, collection and assessment separate. That's the essence of that resolution.
Stan, go ahead, counsel Trump.
I don't, that one percent is what we get.
Yes.
That one percent is what we get if they were coming.
Sure. Yeah. Okay, any other questions? All right, Mr. Turner, it's time.
Uh, item number ten, uh, resolution R one sixty-two that twenty-two, resolution to approve contracts to avenue to automate business license. Uh, this resolution is aimed at improving, providing approved remittance processing services, revenue analysis services, and compliance services. Um, and will utilize it, avenue will utilize to do this, the Alabama Tax Credit Bill of Rights Act and Uniform Revenue Protection Act, certified in title four, chapter two, where it goes down, down nineteen seventy-five. It was stated contact expansion with avenue, but it wasn't to be approved.
And for the record, I'd like to see within the confines of the resolution, the Alabama Tax Credit Bill of Rights, I'm sure I treasure it, there, uh, with that, so. I am very glad to see, uh, that mention, uh, as the direction we're going in. Go ahead, counsel Thomas.
My question, okay. But this, if, if this were to be from Alabama, uh, tax collector, the avenue that collects our tax?
Yes, avenue currently collects all of our other taxes.
Okay, so we're doing a contract with, with them back again?
And this, they do everything for business license.
Okay.
And this specific resolution relates to allowing them now to handle our business license.
So they're gonna, avenue's gonna handle our business license?
Which would include the contract.
Okay, so when the contract is not, you don't have to.
I, there is a contract that I've already reviewed, yes, I did not present it, it's already been reviewed.
So, we, do we have to vote on it?
We, we. We need the contract.
We need the contract.
I, I can get it to you tomorrow, I, I'll, I'll get it gotten.
Okay.
I can get it to you tomorrow.
Because what we do, uh, if, if, if we have a contract in front of us, and if the resolution were to mention the contract, of course, the contract is doing. Uh, is approved via the resolution. However, if we have to, we can approve a contract in the resolution, whichever way is fine.
And that's, I understand, so, yeah, what I'm getting at is, there were discussions all going.
Really, okay.
And I'm, I'm, I'm utilizing the expertise of the sponsor of the resolution.
If we get that contract before Tuesday.
We can get it tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks. Okay.
Item number twelve, uh, resolution R one sixty-three that twenty-one slash twenty-two, resolution to approve a contract with trust and law or remote deposit. Uh, whereas the city of Selma is authorized to account finances, city councils, itself. And whereas the current banking feature of the city of Selma is able to review online only, which reduces the ability of time and deposits and electronic catalog of all payments into the city of Selma, the private accounts. Now that could be talked about by the city council, the city of Selma, Alabama, by what is valid of the city of Selma expanding its current online banking features with trust and law, trust and law, to include the ability to enter into operating cash management, funds transfer, automated clearinghouse, suite services, remote deposit and capture service, master repurchase, online banking, night depository, safe deposit box, lockbox, positive pay, electronic voucher recording, and other agreements related to deposit, council trust and law. I wish I could tell you I understand everything in this resolution, but if you don't, if we're not, if we're to task connect, who is the sponsor of this resolution?
Uh, again, counsel, Mrs. Thomas, I'm here, I'm here.
But I, I do understand, because it's something that I do on a daily basis, and I highly recommend that this, um, put it twice. Um, if you're here to do it remotely, however, I do need to know, um, what the fees are. Um, and whether you try to monthly or annual fee, the first time, we, we would not need to know that.
Uh, is this, okay, uh, I mean, Mr. Roper can speak to some of this. I think I understand, but I'm sure you can back from.
I'm saying this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen, it's.
We're gonna show.
All right, evening, councilors, good day, all right, council members, mayor, uh, that, in relation to the fee, um, there's a check scanner that, uh, costs eight hundred dollars, that fee is totally waived, and it's gonna be a fee.
That way?
It's totally waived. And then the monthly fee is fifty dollars, and then it's gonna be, um, six cent per check.
And the checks, they don't, they don't charge fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Do you have an estimate of how many checks you, you run?
Well, right now, we have ten thousand properties and three thousand businesses. So with that, uh, we were moving about, we'll just say thirteen thousand checks between, between October and January. But that number will be drastically reduced as we move our visitor license over to avenue. That's three thousand that will be reduced, that will not be settled to that. Also, you'll, you'll have, when we move the tax collection over to the county, it further reduces, so the fee is gonna be minimized. And I'll tell you that, uh, because we're gonna get the money to the bank a little bit sooner, you're gonna get money in the form of interest that it probably takes.
Especially with the sweep check set up, and I did, uh, got one in progress.
With that, we've got, um, whoever is running check, has to manually, that's the back of each check, it's a lot of time, and, I mean.
Jesus.
Yeah.
Okay, good stuff, all right.
On, on that note, we're spending nine hours, nine hours a week at the bank.
Good, good for now, all right. Any other questions? I told you, Mr. Roper, man.
Where? She asked, where she said, is there, at least we're coming up to tomorrow.
Okay, you got, counsel Thomas, okay. All right, maybe, Mr. Roper, Mr. Turner, go on to the next item.
Uh, item number twelve, resolution, well, R one sixty-four that twenty-one slash twenty-two, resolution for raise for certain tax license employees. City of Selma, whereas the city of Selma is requesting a realignment of a personnel position entitled Waste Account Coordinator from code enforcement quality to tax license department. And whereas to accomplish the realignment of the following action is requested, one, transition of waste accounts coordinator, two, resolving the position currently titled Waste Account Coordinator, three, distributing the associated duties associated with the Waste Account Coordinator of the following positions, tax license department accounts clerk, tax license department license inspector, and second tax license department license inspector position into tax license department, and four, transfer of thirty-four thousand two hundred fifty dollars in no sense of code enforcement budget associated with waste accounts, coordinating salary, insurance, feedback for maintenance, automation, equipment, training, supplies, and all associated, associated items of waste accounts coordinator position to the tax license question. Uh, the above request, realignment is requested to be approved.
Any questions? All right, no questions, next time.
Uh, item number fourteen, thirteen, I'm sorry. I think I'm gonna be.
You did twelve.
I don't know, twelve.
That's twelve.
It's thirteen. I skipped to forty-five, I skipped, I'm taking out a while. Resolution R one fifty-eight that twenty-one slash twenty-two, resolution authorizing an approving execution of a contract with Bancorp South Equipment Finance, Division of Bancorp South Bank. One twenty twenty-two international HX six twenty truck, known as the Delta, with Ox Stampede Dump Body. Uh, we're asking that this equivalent, which I believe, I was told, it might be delivered tomorrow, is approved. This resolution is approved. Uh, there is a packet of information which is currently being processed. They ask that we expedite processing of the paperwork due to the fact that they want to expedite delivery. And everybody in, in every man building, voting, it's a way around this trouble.
So we've already approved the purchase of the vehicle, this is just for bank boards?
Yes.
That it's been?
Yes. This is part of their paperwork, but we got, it's a, a quick comment, so.
Okay. All right, counsel, look over this, and if you have any questions about this, you can ask, uh, the attorney before Tuesday. I know for some of you, all this is the first time you've seen it. Go ahead.
I did one question, are you including in the, uh, in the amount that you're spending for the, it's gonna be in fifteen years, the amount that you're paying for that stock?
It's in the, uh, complete paper, there's, there are about eight or ten other sheets to go on, but this.
Don't be like that, I guess, uh, I gotta say, if you know, you're wondering why you're running the issue there, what we spend the last month on.
I think you, I think you've already spent, I'm gonna make sure you've spent the same amount.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I, I, I'll get that to you, uh, too, and, and, and I purely, I just don't want to pull it in this, pull it in.
Okay.
Yeah. I can include that with the, you know, information that will be requested be sent in the home avenue contract tomorrow. Item number fifteen, uh, contractor services. This agreement is made between the city of Selma and Auburn University Government Economic Institute of Technology, EPI. What you have here is in the first couple paragraphs, we use the wall of the recitation, starting with paragraph two, descriptions and scope of services. The third major word of the scope of work sent to us by Auburn G E P I to include what they're doing, when they're doing, how they're doing, the cost of doing it, the term that they expect is to take place over. And, uh, the term is March first, uh, twenty twenty-two, the projected start time of the project, and, uh, expected completion date by the end of October twenty twenty-two. This agreement sets out in some detail the fact that some of this work is going to be included, but none of it will proceed, that's not included in the agreement without the written consent of the city of Selma's authorized representatives. And that any changes will also in turn have to improve, improve the rights by all of our processes, and it's in the council.
Hey, before we go into, uh, barrage of questions, uh, hold on, before we go into it, uh, for most of us, this is the first time we've seen it. So, the best question of those after you've had a chance to read.
Okay, that is.
And so, uh, I would advise, if you would like to read this before Tuesday, and you can ask the attorney before Tuesday, if you have questions after reading, uh, I think that would be best for us right now, unless you got, so, let me break down.
I think just one thing that I would like to make up off of this, last time, and I think, uh, I think it showed a little bit of evidence, is maybe having one point of that, being a helpful question, and, and that way, we're, we're, we have somebody who did, went to a marketing relationship going on overage. Counsel Thomas has been involved with this, with the get go, she's a committee chair.
Counsel, well, which sounds, Chris, you tell Chris.
I think it would be good to have somebody who puts it, so that the notes go on. And we're, we're over the box, and I think we should include that on our.
Okay.
This is much as, but, or, you got.
Hey, is there any objection that, right now, having him add that, other than counsel Chris Thomas, that she might object? Any other objection? Okay, can we add that, and then also again, read over the entire document, and then if you have any questions between now and Tuesday, ask them before the meeting on Tuesday. Uh, Ms. Mosley, I'm truly glad you tagged them, and get those to the attorney.
Got it, counsel. Okay, I said, you said those two.
I said before Tuesday.
Yeah, I already got down with you to that.
So, and, and.
And I got it, yeah.
All right. Thank you, thank you, next time, Mr. Turner.
Uh, item number sixteen, I think we already filled it, yeah. Item number seventeen, section of Union Street, this is where I'm envisioning a person going down, tonight. Yet, still two people are approved. Uh, this is enough, how we have an update, uh, the code enforcement officials, who would normally circulate petition for individuals along the street, which names is sought and retained, have already done their, the, the report back was that they were being met with more questions about who the person was than the not desired, being desired to change the name. I contacted the sponsors of the bill, both of them, and talked with them. They are taking the appropriate steps to do a crash education of the residents of that affected street with a flyer pointing out why they're requesting or asking for the name to be changed. By the way, there was an interesting question they asked about whether or not we should be doing that education. I said, well, normally, no, that's the sponsor, responsibility, but I understand why you're asking. They wanted to know what was in the petition that was circulated. I told them the petition that was circulated is the form generated in my office that requires us to do what we're doing, and to note about the treat residents of what their responsibilities are, if they're agreed to change the name. That's what's in the petition.
Are they still trying to have this done by?
Yes.
In March third?
Yes.
And so, after a meeting on Tuesday, we won't miss it before?
This is supposed to be done before you need to.
Okay, okay, so we'll be, so we'll have this information, we can.
That's what the discussion then to today and yesterday, and that's why I'm bringing it up there to you, to let you know where we are. But that effort to further educate and cluster the street with brief information in bullet form, because I said, more you know people, less likely they are related.
All right.
I have a question to ask. With your campaign saying that you send out into, from the City of Selma, out into the community, uh, whereabouts were your signature, uh, how does that, how does that look from that area though?
There were not a lot of yeses, but there was not a significant number of no's. Any questions were, was, the issue was, we want more information.
And that's what I tried to tell them at the first meeting, when we come into the community over there, half of the people, they are elderly people that locate in that area, and they would like to know more, and I'm hoping that they will, they go over there, they can explain to them more about.
I'll talk to both the sponsors, we're supposed to talk about it tomorrow.
And then they are very particular about signing the name.
Which about which, there's another person, sending another person, a person out to do a follow-up. Yeah, that's not in the application process, but that's what we call for.
Also, I'd say this too, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Kirk Carleton, uh, all this files of people in that area too, and he, he said that if there were any questions or wanted to get more feedback or more information on that, they ought to give their signature to some of those residents to agree to that. Gave you contact number, and I think they would feel really good to know that, that can give them more of input more on why they should name, rename, et cetera, for not already found them.
Well, I told the sponsors, they need to provide their contact number, or whatever that's out, but I was even willing to let them contact me. So people, if they think that this is a more official response to the petition of the application, as busy as I am, I'm willing to go with that.
And also, they have to come to, uh, uh, my church, Mount Diamond Cremated Baptist, those who have some church that residents that would have to want to agree to.
I would let, uh, the sponsors know, I thought it was today and after, I would let them know that too, if I would be counsel on time.
All right, all right.
I have a number.
That's it.
That's it.
Yes, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, we appreciate it.
Remember, one question in reference to attorney for specific to the baseball agreement with county, want to know, uh, is there any anticipated opposition to that will surface on Tuesday? Can I presume that that would be on the consensus agenda, consent agenda?
When we go on, and, uh, especially, we go on.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's.
You're good, now, right? It's approved, it's approved, it's just waiting for signature, okay? Excellent, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up my, 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 uh, the, uh, the, 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 that, too, is about changing the rest of the big groups and stuff, they kind of have to write down what it looks like. And, you know, just something simple like that, I think would, would help.
Thank you, all right, let's go ahead and start our business side of the council, uh, Councilman Redoff is here, so we'll move on to the next item, uh, Councilman Harblin, first you, Bob. Uh, clarification on approved salaries.
Okay, and the easiest thing, I don't know, we can. Yes, this is, could you come up here? And I would love to be able to, even if you and, just you and I could look at this screen, it would be absolutely wonderful, because it would be easier for me to show you rather than, I mean, I'd be more happy to, in our budget document, we had approved our, our wishes.
We, we would like for our trainers to sit at the table and take, get their voices throughout our view. So I don't know if we need to make it into a resolution or, um, below that, but instead of that, our treasurer in the audience, we invite our treasurer to be, to, to.
One thing I would mention is, in the budget, it was approved, there was a total salary amount, all the salaries, of nine million six hundred fifty thousand, and I'm wrong, okay? Nine point six five million. In the salary spreadsheet, that, that, uh, that you did a lot of work on, a lot of information together, of course, and that was including kind of the, you know, the, the lower end of Auburn's scale, middle of it, and the upper end. But total, um, budget amount salaries, everything is six point eight million, so there's a pretty big discrepancy in what was approved of the budget and what's actually in the salary spreadsheet that we're working on. Yeah, I'll fill that later, anybody done that? And this is, this is.
This is, uh, uh, uh.
Okay.
It's what the account, they.
Right. Yeah.
They need to make that, but, 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 but.
Yeah. So. I'm, I'm following on that, this is what I have a question, is all these amounts, is only adding up to six million? What we, what's in the budget? Is that, is that nine million, that straight up, nine million six hundred fifty thousand? Maybe it's just there's some unbounded positions in there on a stat. This is my biggest, I'll, I'll tell you this, I think the biggest question is, is the, 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 okay, okay, well, maybe I will just, uh, 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 budget has, we, 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 so I'll just call her, she and I are working on this spreadsheet, just to make sure, because I, I think the object is, and I'm hoping what I'm seeing is, that we can, it, I really think there's a good possibility that we could adopt Auburn's pay scale, and what we are paying them is, what we, our budget, our approved budget for salaries is gonna be in that model. Now, we still be on the low end, but at least be able to fix it in the model. First thing we need to do is to make sure that we capture everything in the budget, all the budgeted salaries that are approved, and make sure it's in the spreadsheet. So then we're gonna show, because what the spreadsheet does is it shows the effect of, okay, the bottom of the pay scale, and everybody's at the bottom of the scale, pay scale, here's the difference in the two, if they're in the middle, here's the difference in the two, if they're top, here's the difference in the two. So, we got to add some, some formulas in here, and then come get the right amounts, and I think we'll, we're gonna be really get up and running, we can, we can get this in. No, I think it's gonna be an increase if they approve back at all, when I.
That's what I, more than I said, that's what, that's what, I'm thinking, that's what.
So we'll get that, we'll get, we'll get one down.
That's me just approving the office, right? When can we approve?
We approve the budget in September. The, the, when I have.
So that's, that's where I think the, 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 okay.
Are they not leaving off on the ready proof?
Oh, when I wonder if they can tell you, I don't, I don't know.
I believe they are, I believe they are, I haven't told you anything different. But, let me ask, Chief, Chief, are, uh, are we supposed to give a, what we approve? Yes, that's what, okay, thank you, thank you. Go ahead, Councilman.
To your point about, there are some of there that were gone, they're, they're, they're well, yeah.
Yeah, that's the point, when we can give visibility of everything, I think we can go through and actually all about that.
That's, 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 okay. And, 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 there's, uh, there's a, 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 I know, I was brought in there, that, that is currently, or, that, that, my, in, wow, we're, we're, we're.
Go ahead.
Anyway, we'll discuss that, too.
Okay, go ahead, or you can call in beforehand, with that question, through Ms. Mosley, you can call beforehand if you'd like. Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
And I agree with, with, uh, you just said, and I really do agree with you about this all, pay, um, pay scale, and, um, I hope that you, we need to pass that.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be.
Anyway, so we need to pass that, make sure we're being fair to all employees there at the minimum wage, to bring them up to where they need to.
All right, so we got game plan, Councilmen, want to give the treasure and, okay?
We will, we will, at least ever, we'll use that accurate information, so.
All right.
And my next was public buildings, and I, I know this man, he's not here, um, this mayor, I can see this guy, he's right. Mr. Mayor, can you and I look at this, this report on this public building, and you may manage, show us, what, what's that, uh, can you look at this spreadsheet with me, so I can see what I named this man, he was building on this public, on this public? Yeah, if, if you said it to me, and we, we can go over, and then we can call, that's fine.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we, we talked about, am I free to go ahead and mention your public building stuff, you want?
Well, you can go ahead, I won't give it on my report.
Let me back up.
No, go ahead, you, 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 y'all, you want to go?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I don't know what's going on, do we, did I go back now?
When we had our, uh, folk buildings committee, uh, Councilman Jay Thomas brought up, you know, and I, I think we get in here too, that, that, we gotta make the repairs to these buildings, and we've got the money sitting in the bank, the longer we wait, the worse shape these buildings will get. If we can get an accurate number on what it's gonna take to fix these buildings, I think we can go ahead and get it approved, we can fund it, and then we can go through the proper steps, whether, you know, we have to bid, set up, or whatever, but I think we can get this stuff approved, if we can get some accurate numbers on what it's gonna cost to fix.
Honestly, I think that if, if, if we go ahead and approve the document prepared by Trisette, as far as the one point six million, go ahead and make it unrestricted, then that's gonna open up some revenue, that we can go and get my stuff done. So I think Tuesday is important for us to put it on.
Yeah, so I will, if you have this spreadsheet, you want me to send it to the mayor?
No, you send it to him.
Okay.
No, I guess it won't be set, but since you opened it up, all I take is that, y'all will want to order that.
Get some carpet and sit in, huh?
The, uh, and I'm sorry, I was, I was, that was Miss Jang's, I was saying it was mine, mine was landwear drive, and I don't know, and I, I understand this department here that work on, we've gotta come up with some kind of system, just like needing an update. My understanding is, once the audit was done, and we're grant funds available to redo landwear drivers, total disaster. Um, I would, since that has been done, I would like to just get an update on, um, you know, when we might have that done. Um, I don't know if this is, it's on, but I guess I would like to have some kind of vehicle for us to bring these things up, and at least it get reported back to us, instead of anyway, until next, next work session, bring it up again, and nobody's here, and I never get an answer, and you never get it, I, I, I think we could just be a little more systematic, getting information to our speakers. I don't know what the best way to do that is, uh, but I would like to get an update on the landwear road project. Any suggestions, do you might have any suggestions how to get that?
I'd like to drop that up, because I was trying to get that main question about Oak Street.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and I, I don't, do we need to submit email, uh, any, any suggestions?
Well, we need, um, Councilman Harvey, it is ranked, uh, I'm not sure which meeting it was, for, for my, oh, you look like sort of, um, Councilman, for my, I remember it was in one of the meetings, um, an app that we can probably use, um, you know, where you can input the work order and then, you know, also allow the department to, where they put the, um, so that, that, on that app, they can get the work completed.
It's a meeting, everybody don't, I guess, I, you know, it's an easy thing, we need to work, if there's something wrong with the truck, we put it in there, aside if it bigger, you know, the budget do it, and, and, uh, whatever, I, I feel like it works the same way, uh, with, with, uh, work request, it's just a request, and, and I just let you know, hey, this is something that's gonna need to be checked out, you know, it's a market off of this, or whatever, you know, whatever that everybody, you know.
I, I gotta imagine.
I think, I think it's gonna, it's gonna have to involve the government for a job, actually.
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna perhaps have a meeting, a, a work, maybe, uh, hopefully we'll have one of those, uh, sort of, future, maybe.
And I think, and I, I know we have some computers and some technology issues, but I'm, I feel confident, I didn't not replicate it, but I still would imagine that the, was in the new world, or whatever our system is, our work order, I'm, I'm sure the work order system works like most of them do, you put a work order in, and, I mean, you got a board that you can print out, and we can see that board, and there's notes that you can put in there, hey, this is what we do, and I'm sure it would be nice.
This out, uh, yeah, this is out, on, 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 the, 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 last year, the, or you have last year, the bar for requests that go in, and, and what's been, what's happened with, with everything else, you know, like, what's, what's.
When you got a leak control though? But it's done, was attempted to bring up the city, comparing that house, and it was lost, there's some work or request that were missing, she did not know that for the works, who sent a work or request that, and I. She did not know that for the works, who sent a work order request that, I'm hitting them all. Pops and some of them, and I have another follow up with that that is on the broker. They used to deliver back to us once they're completed. It will be out at the bottom, what they done and all that. She was just trying to attempt to put it in work and the spreadsheet wasn't extremely good.
Right, yeah.
And that's why somebody was missing. So we decided to, I suggested to her that since public works didn't send back to us or do file. And then I said, I said, you can get yourself time to somebody who needs one other with the goal.
Right. Well, that's, you know, it would cut out a lot of that, but everybody had that one. And then you can all go through that.
I mean, nobody knows the spreadsheet more than that.
Yeah.
But, you know, put the work order in the system, it'll bring out we don't ever put it in the system without no having.
Okay, so the work order process is a work in progress.
I hope you have a progress.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, come on, you got the next.
On the state, we need to record it because I think most of our King Street, I did go for a planning measure. But we all came through. I already said, no, that's King Street and all that. So I'm not sure how we'll move forward with that, but hopefully the attorney would have that followed up. The zoning board adjustments. We need to really get on that because I actually got a couple calls about zoning adjustment in my board and I know that needs to be in place. So just something we need to look at here pretty soon. Did we put that in the legislature this week? Okay. Mallory Drive was a quote I sent out last time, again, wanting to follow up. Wanted with, uh, very handsome by the office. Once again, want to follow up with very handsome. We've asked him to bring us these things and have not. Have not gotten anything. As far as it goes, it's the fact that coming up really, really fast and there are some legal questions that will present in the public opinion. And if we don't get these answers, then right, then we're gonna need backup and that. There's just no, we can't move forward without that company right. And we'll discuss that again further in the Public Works Committee meeting or Tuesday. It shows me that's and it's been a mystery. Maybe we'll get
It's part of this, part of this.
Part of this, really. Okay. Just, we give a separate panel for those and then walk over the end, go back, you know, just each way. And that's all. Bye. I'll talk to you later.
Okay. That was quick. That was quick. Thank you, Councilman Harvey. And how many can get someone else's answers for you? Alright, the next two items, Councilwoman Thomas, cost of repair of public buildings and gas supports from Kuba Oil.
Okay, you got it. And you can get that now and then we'll come back and set up a day you would like to set up another public building. Also, we would like to be able to have a public building director here so we can know exactly the which direction the building's made out, where we're gonna be doing the work at and the right amount there by each.
Yeah, but last time she didn't.
Yeah, she couldn't make it.
She couldn't make it, so.
Okay, my next item is, the reason why I asked for the gas support from Kuba Oil. I asked for the information that first they sent me, they sent this information, but it wasn't the right information that I wanted. And the reason why I asked that, I would follow up. According to our state example report about gas. We have a little problem with that. Also, I'm looking at, I wanna look at things where we have, where the party units have how many people have used a gas card? And, because I think, well, let me tell you. There is a reason once I did it out here with the mayor after Kuba Oil had called me. I think that we need to look at that from each department. Because a lot of people take the media for tone. They're not, all we use are not at the on the municipality property or not up here. And I think we, we're gonna find something very interesting about being using that. And I will get that type of information that I have. Also, I wanted to add, there was another item I wanted to add. It came in, I emailed the county, the manager, the manager. He said that he had one. We gotta email the manager about tax that stated on the past is
You're talking about the one you said regarding we have to make an approval by certain date of all of those businesses because of police jurisdiction?
Yes.
That's the one you're talking about?
Uh-huh. They sent us from the state of them and said all municipality must reply to this here, we were done. We've stayed there. And it requires us to meet that. And I wanted to share with us to make sure that our city is
In compliance. Tax collector, broker, if you can get with Councilwoman Thomas, she can get you that document that she's referring to. I think we need to go ahead and take that vote soon. I can't remember the dates, but I think March or March nine or there. So we probably need to vote on something Tuesday. But if you can get with them, I'll be great.
Yeah, that's why I know that doesn't have to be, you know, they sent it to, I got it yesterday. It was in the email around four or something. And it required us at the municipality that, make sure we make sure.
Thank you. And I'm sure Mr. Broker, thank you, okay? Alright, that concludes your items. The next item, sewage issues in Warsette. And this is my own, I guess, a follow up regarding citizens' requests. And we are gonna be going to the administrative committee trying to propose some type of way to follow up on citizens' requests. I think you all remember we had citizens come. And citizens say, if you don't have citizens' requests on the agenda, if you're not following up, you're not gonna have none. And so we have it on there and we need to follow up. And so one of the things I want to keep in front of us, starting with our last, and that was when Pastor Marshall came to us about his sewage issues. And I think he, I think if I remember correctly, I think Public Works and Mayor sort of talked to him or something like that. Mayor, do you have anything you can add to that or at this time or no, any additional information you can provide?
I know we've been tied up between First Avenue and Fifth Avenue. Back over to church, Broad, we got a major problem over there. And you, and you send, send, I guess, a portion of your board kind of going up. But if you, if you go down Broad Street, I was locked out and everything. That's where most of Public Works is. It's a huge problem. And we're trying to get it healed with that. So it's a function of pride and we work there.
Thank you. And I appreciate that response. And because just want to keep it in front of us. You know, that's one of the things that we need to do is keep it in front of us until we get something. Go ahead.
And may I, may I say this too? When it comes to sewer ways and that is a emergency profit issue that the resident is not supposed to wait that long. And we need to look at because every time if somebody else got an issue, but these people have been patiently, they have spent money out of their pocket and the issue has not solved. And I will be coming to the council as legislators, that this is a work that we look at someone to be able to take care of. It's a free one. Every time we talk about it, it's an issue. Is somebody else open another ear? And citizens might be told that the sewer ways is a problem.
Thank you, Colonel. Mayor, is there anything that we can do from a legislative standpoint, expert hacker, assist, just let us know? If there's anything that we can do on our part. Go ahead, Councilman.
I was gonna add, do we know about how much is gonna cost to make this issue? Because, I mean, and I think Councilwoman Thomas asked a question at the meeting today.
About where we are taking public building process because it declared as emergency. We actually could certainly make a process. Public Works can't.
Do we have any idea how much it costs?
I think so, but I don't have it though. I think, I think it's public works. I don't know if it's a date. It's not yet. You know, if you remember the price, you know, have a price handed on that project that Pastor Marshall taught over there.
May it stay there.
We don't have it an exact cost yet, Mayor, because there's several things that we got, we're looking at that we got in place. We went back out there, today is Thursday, we were back out there Wednesday. And we rerouted what we were planning on doing. We got to add two more manholes. We gotta, we're gonna run the pipe in a different direction than what we had initially started on. So they were actually, Ray Neil was working up a cost on that. Now, some of the stuff we already have from past projects, like the manholes. And the biggest issue we have right now is acquiring pipe. Pipe is like gold to everybody right now. It's hard to find and it's hard. And when you get it, it is expensive. But we do have a manhole, so that's gonna cut down on the cost. I don't have, I don't have an exact cost for you right now.
We're even giving an update on the project between First Avenue and Fifth.
Okay, where we are, we are from Lauderdale to Fifth, Fifth Avenue to Lauderdale to back to Broad, all the way down to First Avenue in front of Brown Drugs. If you notice when you ride down Broad Street, there's two patch places there. And that's where I would cave in and that has that whole area back there between Fifth, Lauderdale, First Avenue, all of that is blocked. Every manhole in that area is full. And the people back there are complaining because we have actually sewage running out on Lauderdale in the, in the storm drain gutters. And someplace on Fifth Avenue, the pressure from that water is actually seeping up through the streets because it's backed up in front of Brown Drugs and right there at Walker's Monterey. We met with DOT yesterday. We got permission from them to go into the state highway to start cutting. Bowl was gonna start this morning, but due to the climate weather, we wasn't sure whether or not we were gonna be able to get down because of the threat of the storm or whatever. But we did get the streets blocked off and if everything go well and it's calm tonight, he will be digging in there tomorrow morning. We gotta get some relief on those people because we're, we're talking about exactly close to about twenty houses in that area and some businesses in that area as well that's backed up right now. So that's where we are with that.
Thank you for that update. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. What you do.
I want to remember the agents who, I'm gonna ask this council, will President Marshall spend his money? I would like for them to really have, he spent his money on, for the while, they have sewage to come in, to come in and find out what he gets from. And he found out that he couldn't see the problem. I think we need to reimburse him back for all the trouble that he had to use to try to find out what was going on and then finding out. The situation has not, it's not healed yet any right now. I just think we need to, cities need to reimburse that for this.
Thank you, Council. Can they go to the park office and do a volume form for any market?
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just gonna add for that mission. He, he went all the way to find out what he was from. He was in the problem.
Yes, ma'am. And also, and I mean, I'll be bringing, well, Councilwoman James, we're bringing a request in about three thousand dollars for a special area for cell cleaning service. So we'll be asking for that on Tuesday as well, Councilwoman James. Alright, we'll go into committee reports. We already talked about the American best complaint. For public safety, we had a American business meeting last Tuesday discussing a plethora of issues. One of the things that we need to talk about is when Chief Wolford bring in the club owners. Soon he's gonna take care of that and meet the club owners and advise them of their requirements. Especially with the spring coming, we know that entertainment will be increasing. So he's gonna meet with the club owners, remind them of all local laws that they need to be in compliance with. We also went over the noise ordinance, which we will be coming back in our next public safety meeting and making recommendations for the noise ordinance. We discussed that one and then we also are going to be discussing several other ordinances. The noise ordinance was the first one involved to the community's attention. So we will be drafting, we'll be getting with legal and drafting modified noise ordinance based off of the recommendations that come out of the committee. Some of those recommendations, including placing some language in the noise ordinance about fireworks that wasn't really mentioned in previous ordinances or modifications of it. Also talked about possibly increasing fines. Right now it's $250 per violation. Talking about possibly increasing that to $300. Again, that's this draft, but we're working on putting some more teeth in the noise ordinance and also placing within the noise ordinance an intent clause, which if it's ever challenged, they can look at the intent on why we have a noise ordinance in existence. Just as other cities have. This will give the noise ordinance a little bit more judicial enforcement, which is needed. We'll also be consulting with the chief to make sure that what we place in there is hopefully something that's going to enforce as well as with our municipal court because they will be charged if someone is accused of violating the ordinance or have to go before our municipal courts. We're working on that one and then we'll be working on the lease ball and other laws. We also took up the appointments concerning the municipal court. And we know that Judge Taylor's appointment is up in municipal court. And so we are recommending, we're gonna bring that before the body of vote on on Tuesday. We'll be bringing a vote of a process where we are opening up that appointment to allow individuals a period of thirty days to apply for the position. They'll send their resumes to the human resources and also to council president. After the conclusion of the thirty days, however many people apply, the public safety committee will meet, will go over all resumes, conduct interviews, narrowing it down to three individuals. We will submit those three names to the council for the council's approval. A two-step process. The council will narrow down from three to two based off of votes. And then from that two, they will vote on one. Then whoever gets it will receive a majority vote of the council, at least a vote of five. And so that's what we are presenting to the council for approval regarding the municipal judge. And we also are doing the same thing regarding the prosecutor and the defense lawyer. I was hoping that the lawyer would be able to respond, you know, hopefully be able to get us some more information. We filed a conflict language about who exactly has the appointments. Some of us, some of us have read information that says the council has both the appointment for the prosecutor and for the, the two prosecutors and for the defense lawyer. And this, this, this doesn't say nothing. So hopefully by Tuesday we'll know. And if we are responsible for And if we are responsible for the appointment of the prosecutor and are responsible for the defense lawyer, then we want to record the same process to, uh, pay those positions that we are recommending to fill the position for children. That's the recommendation that came out unanimously from the, uh, public safety committee concerning those appointments. Uh, additionally, uh, in the meeting, uh, we had an opportunity, uh, to, what we've done, the, uh, the fire treatment form that's been completed, talking about the citizens' review board. And we are waiting for, uh, Birmingham, uh, to have their meeting where we can take our individuals that were selected, uh, so that they can see how it works. We also, before then, will be having a preliminary meeting with those individuals that were chosen to serve on the citizens' building review board, but we will provide them with information concerning the Open Meetings Act. As a public body, they too will have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. So we need to inform them of that responsibility and provide them with that information. Uh, and we also will give them some other preliminary documents, uh, and also provide them with a copy of the organizing document, document that was used to create the civilian review board. They need to know their responsibility, they have select a chair, they have select a secretary, they have responsibilities. And so we'll try to get that going in the meeting within the coming weeks. Uh, uh, we are trying to seal the, as COVID cautious as possible. And also remind them that the councils had many, many, many other committee meetings going on at the same time. But we have to get it done. Are there any questions about those items that are coming out of the public safety committee this time? Yes, then, uh, Councilwoman Thomas.
I do want to say this, um, the lead caller was about, was about Allen. Uh, we're supposed to get through our city clerk.
About, oh, sorry, about what's that?
We, you know, the lead, you remember, uh, the guy from the, representative from the house, the survey, they're dealing with Allen. Survey, uh, they're supposed to come through, through the city assembly for the council members to fill out. Uh, so much to give, we like for, uh, our municipality to do that survey and send back.
Yes, yes, I remember, they're supposed to be sitting there.
They finished it up.
Uh, did they send it to the clerk's office?
They said it's supposed to come to House, uh, Assembly, City Board.
Okay, so once she gets it, then we can take action. And so we don't know if she's got to get the, what she's. She's got to get it, and so that was concerning the, uh, Allen control issues. Uh, they brought that up today, uh, as well. Okay, yes, ma'am.
On, on the item that the attorney, um, is responsible for, he might want to send down an email.
Those are.
I have a vote that when, when it comes to this day, you know, what happens, he gives up.
Yes, and over the weekend, I'll get with Mrs. Ellison, and we'll try, because she has a much better memory than I do. And, uh, we'll try to make sure we go over those items, uh, and try to make sure we get those taken. I think that, and so, um, we'll, we'll work together, we'll be, we're gonna find together, right now we're all together, we're gonna find. All right, with that said, council, there be no further business of the citizens'. This word, this is dangerous, sir. You got.